Thank you for joining us. Do you want me to go ahead and start with? Okay, thank you for joining us this evening for the September 6, 2022, Montesereno City Council Regular Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few House rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we are using Zoom to host a city council regular meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, Chat and Raise Hand. Please use Chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use Raise Hand to be recognized by the mayor and enabled to speak to the council. To comment under Oral Communication or on any agenda item, you're allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to 350 words can also be submitted to the city clerk and it will be read into the record. The word limit is set to adhere to the typical three-minute time allowance. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the Raise Hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we are not all in the same room, all votes at this meeting will be taken by roll call.
Thank you. This is Mayor Protem Brian Mekachuk and the mayor. Mayor Elahi is in Los Angeles and he's asked me to chair the meeting in his absence until he joins and then after he joins. And so what I'd like to do is call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. And I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Lawler, could you lead us, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Just may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Luthold.
Present.
Councilmember Lawler.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Mayor Protem Mekachuk.
Present.
And Mayor Elahi has not joined yet, but we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to go to Orders of the Day, but I want to, I want to say that what we're experiencing right now are rolling blackouts in the city of Montesereno. And I know that City Hall lost their power, but our natural gas fire generator kicked in. So the people at City Hall, being the clerk and others, are able to attend. But as well, our council has advised us that if we lose a quorum because power goes off and, and someone, we lose, basically there's less than three people, then we have to stop the meeting immediately. So what I'd like to do is just change the orders of the day with putting the, starting with the new business item one, or sorry, item one, and then go to the Consent Calendar so we can approve the minutes and the warrant list, and then go back to new business items two, three, and four, and then go to Oral Communications, Presentations, Written Communications. Is that acceptable to the council members? I'm seeing some nods.
Yes.
When subject, objecting to that, okay. So we'll start right in, in case we lose a quorum. And we'll go to item one, New Business: Consideration of the Approval of an Updated Fee Schedule for User and Regulatory Fees. Mr. Leon Artis, can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Mekachuk. This evening, our staff report will be presented by our, our building official/plan check contractor, Ali Fadepour, if he is on the line. He can present the information.
Yes, actually Diana Perkins is going to present all the items tonight.
Okay. Pass to me, so.
I was in there to do it when Diana was here.
So I am Diana Perkins, the city planner. And this is an item to consider, an update to our fee schedule for user and regulatory fees. In 2018, the city contracted with Clear Source Financial Consulting to complete a study to determine the city's costs of providing building, engineering, and planning permit and inspection services. In May of 2018, the city council adopted an updated fee schedule, which was designed to cover approximately 77% of the combined costs to provide these services. State law requires that these types of user fees not exceed the actual cost of providing the service. The fee study completed in 2018 also recommended that fees be adjusted annually based on the Consumer Price Index of the San Francisco Bay Area to keep current living inflation. After discussion at several city council meetings in 2019, the city council decided not to increase these user fees by the inflationary index, and no changes have been made since that time to the fee schedule. Between 2019 and 2021, the Consumer Price Index has increased a total of 8.7%. The city's cost of providing services has also increased during this time as staffing salaries and the cost of benefits have increased. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the draft resolution attached to the staff report, which includes an updated user and regulatory fee schedule, increasing most building, engineering, and planning permit fees by 8.7%. The fees for the appeal of planning projects, tree removal permits that require a public hearing, and use permit reviews for animals are not recommended to be increased as the city council had previously directed that these fees not be altered when the 2018 fee study was completed. This concludes the staff report, and we are here and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We missed part of what you said, or at least on my audio, I lost you. It was just after you were talking about the increased cost of service and going into the inflationary adjustment. Could you repeat that briefly, please?
Sure. So between 2019 and 2021, the Consumer Price Index has increased a total of 8.7%. And the city's cost of providing services has also increased during this time as staffing salaries and the cost of benefits have increased. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the draft resolution attached to the staff report, which includes an updated user and regulatory fee schedule, increasing most permit fees for building, engineering, and planning projects, the fees for the appeal of planning projects, tree removal permits requiring a public hearing, and use permit reviews for animals are not recommended to be increased as the city council had previously directed these fees not be altered during the 2018 study.
Thank you. One thing before we take questions is, I'd like to mention that in your staff report, you mentioned the Finance Ad Hoc Committee. And that the Finance Ad Hoc Committee made up of Mayor Elahi and myself met several times with staff and we reviewed the analog, the alternatives, the proposed changes, and then the, also the underlying analyses to the user regulatory fees. And the Finance Ad Hoc Committee support staffs recommended fees. With that said, Councilmember Turner, you've got your hand up, go ahead, please.
Yes, you, you said that the increase comes up to 8.7%. Can you break it down yearly from 2018 to 2021? Please?
Absolutely. In 2019, which was the first year that the fees were not increased, the Consumer Price Index was 2.5%. In 2020, it was 2.0%, and in 2021, 4.2%.
Okay, thank you. I have to add this up.
Councilmember Luthold, you've got your hand up, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I had seen communications earlier, I believe, from council indicating that there was an issue with some of the language here. If we included a penalty for, I guess, in, in, there was a penalty clause and it looked like there was a recommendation to remove that. Has that been removed in the draft we're looking at? I hadn't had a chance to re-review that. Or should we be looking at making that change that council was recommending? If so, what are the details of what we would need to change in the resolution to make the change?
I'm, I'll ask staff to respond to that. Go ahead, Ms. Perkins.
Thank you. So there is currently a fee item that's listed in each section of building fees, engineering fees, and planning fees. That is a penalty for work that was commenced without a permit. And that fee is basically doubles what the regular permit fee would be. That is an existing fee. Staff is not recommending to make any changes or alter those fee items. I do believe that the email you're referring to might have been from the city attorney. And I was not included on that email, so pass it off to the city attorney for more information.
I'm, I'll, I'll jump in for a moment. And for the record, please show that Mayor Elahi has joined the meeting. What I'd, I'd like to say is that the fees are not necessarily a penalty, but if there's work that commences without a permit, then there's additional work that is required to, quote, "go back" as if the permit had not been issued and issue it, it's not as efficient. So we're not necessarily penalizing the person, but we're recovering our costs. So I want to make that perfectly clear that even though the cost for unpermitted work will be higher at, with an increase, basically doubling, it's, it's not a penalty, it's to recover our increased costs. And Mayor Elahi has joined the meeting, and you've got your hand up. Go ahead, Mayor Elahi.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Sorry for joining late, I just got into Long Beach. That's, that's, that was a question that we looked at as to whether the penalty should be there or should not be there. It's been there forever, so we're not increasing it. There was all, actually a recommendation to double that more, but we've decided just to leave, leave well enough alone, it's been there. And I think in some way it does deter people from not, from doing work without getting a permit. At some point, I suppose we may have to confront the issue of whether that penalty should be appropriate or not. But my thought is that deterrence will help us, and it has deterred people before. So I would, I would recommend just leaving it as it is for now. And maybe we can get into a bigger discussion on that at an appropriate time.
Thank you. Councilmember Luthold, does that answer your question? Do you have more that you wish to ask?
No, thank you, that answers my question, and we can move through the rest of this and see if there's any public comment as well. I don't know if there is or not, but I guess staff questions first, but mine are answered, thank you.
Okay. So council, have you got any more questions before we open for public comment? I see no hands raised, I see no one nodding, so if we can move to public comment, please, if any member of the public would like to comment on this item, please raise your virtual hand. And I'll let the city clerk manage that process.
There are no hands raised.
With that, I will close public comment, bring it back to council, and see if there's any further discussion. Oh, Councilmember Lawler, you've got your hand raised, go ahead, please.
I do, thank you, Mayor Protem. Just, just in terms of procedure, the recommendation is to review and update this each year, and I wanted to make sure that that review would come, it does come in front of the council during the budget process, correct?
Yes, that is the intention, is to bring it as part of the budget.
All right, thank you. Then I, I, to me, this seems like very reasonable. We haven't updated anything of these fees in a very long time, and I think it's important that we, we do so, and those are my comments.
Am I hearing a motion?
Yes, I will move to adopt the draft resolution to update the fee schedule for user and regulatory fees, and that the fee schedule be reviewed and updated each year as part of the budget setting process.
We've got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mayor Elahi, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Luthold.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mekachuk.
Aye.
And Mayor Elahi.
Aye.
And that motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Per the change to the orders of the day, now we're going to go back to the Consent Calendar. And we've got three items on the Consent Calendar. Would, and I'll make a comment that there was an updated copy of the minutes that went out, an amended copy. Would any member of council like to ask questions on any of the items on the Consent Calendar? Councilmember Lawler, you've got your hand up, go ahead, please.
Yes, Mayor Protem, is the amended copy, the, the minutes regarding the August 25th meeting to reflect that I was in fact present and not absent?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or on the Consent Calendar from Mayor Elahi, go ahead, please?
Yeah, thank you. I, I, I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I mean, I, I found something out that I did not recognize. I think on the warrant list, there's a reduction for a permit, ADU permit fee. The discount that we're giving, the 50% discount was given for a permit for an ADU that was, that has been issued, I guess, in June or July. And I was, I, I thought our permit reduction would only be for next year since it was, it is designed to incentivize people to build ADUs. But my understanding from staff is that that reduction is available right now and that the ADU that are permitted now count towards our, our numbers for next year. So that was good to learn, I thought I'd pass that on to you guys.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no other questions from council, I will open it, public comment on the Consent Calendar. I'll let you manage that, Michelle?
There are no hands up.
No hands up?
Correct.
Then I'll bring it back to council. Any other comments on the Consent Calendar? Seeing none, I'll be looking for a motion, I am looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'm, I'll move to adopt the Consent Calendar.
I think we've got a motion by Councilmember Turner and Councilmember Luthold, is that a second?
Yes.
And a second, we have a motion, second, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Luthold? Councilmember Luthold, yes. Councilmember Turner?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mekachuk?
Aye.
And Mayor Elahi?
Aye.
That motion passes 5-0.
All right, thank you. Now we will go back to our new business. And item two, discuss and provide direction to staff regarding potential changes to the Municipal Code Section, definition of a structure. May we have a staff report on that, please?
Yes, thank you. This is Diana Perkins, again, the city planner. At the August 2nd, 2022 City Council meeting, the council directed staff to provide a report for discussion to review the municipal code's definition of a structure. This was in response to comments raised at the code enforcement appeal hearing, which was also held on August 2nd. The current definition of a structure in the Montesereno Municipal Code includes anything constructed or erected on a parcel, and also includes swimming pools or spas that are capable of holding water to a depth of two feet or more. This definition is used to determine the elements on a parcel that are included in the maximum allowed structural coverage. The attachment to the staff report provides a comparison of the various lot coverage requirements from other jurisdictions. Montesereno is not alone in considering a swimming pool in the definition of a structure. However, this definition is commonly used in other jurisdictions to limit what is equivalent in Montesereno to impervious coverage rather than structural coverage. Staff recommends that the city council provide direction on any potential changes to the current municipal code regarding the definition of a structure. And that completes the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions of staff? Go ahead, Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Ms. Perkins, in your estimation, what is the percentage of coverage that an average swimming pool? How many square feet would a swimming pool be?
Well, I would say an average swimming pool is probably, I would say about 500 square feet.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Luthold, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Perkins, I had a question, and I know we're not dealing directly with the property that caused this headache for everyone right now today. But I wanted to check, I was looking at your chart of the coverage, and it looks like Montesereno, and correct me if I'm wrong, on your, your comparison charts, Montesereno is pretty generous already with structural coverage at 40% compared to many of our similar peer jurisdictions. And we have an impervious surface coverage of 60%, which also seems equal to or more generous than many of our peers. My question, I recall that the structure that brought this about, the home itself already covered within a couple of square feet of our 40% limit on the structural coverage. With the inclusion on the swimming pool and all of the other impervious surface, they would be beyond the 60%, or would they still fall under the 60% maximum impervious coverage, inclusive of the swimming pool and the decking and all of the things that are on that lot? Do you know that?
According to the information that was provided with the swimming pool permit application in 2019, the, that particular lot would comply with the impervious coverage limit of 60%, including the pool.
Okay.
Changes that may have been made, you know, to the lot since that time, I'm not aware of.
Okay. And, and the reason I bring this up, and I just, I, this is a little bit in the nature of comment as well as question, is that in looking at the charts, my, and, and in looking at the, the project that brought this about, my concern is in impervious surface coverage and the drought with the need to recharge the aquifer in Santa Clara County with every available chance we have to do so. I am pro-environment and pro-limiting the impervious surface coverage. And so my concern has been, as we look at changing any of these definitions, are we going to be creating a situation where we're creating more damage to the watershed? And also, since things like ADUs can no longer be counted towards impervious coverage limits, are we going to end up basically paving over paradise and covering every square inch of Montesereno? Which, that particular property that brought this up is a great example of how badly you can cover a lot with decking and, and patio and impervious surface and driveways. If you look at that lot from, from above, you're really looking at a lot that visually seems to have probably 80 or 90% of the available earth covered there. Some of it is semi-pervious, which I think brings it down to that 60%. But my concern on this, and as we look as a council at the rest of this coverage issue, is that we not create unintended consequences. And it looked like we're already plenty generous, and, and we need, I would say we need to be very careful. So those are both my questions and my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Luthold. I believe that Mayor Elahi was next up with his hand raised. Go ahead, Mayor Elahi.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think Councilmember Luthold raises issues that we must consider, and this issue may have to be considered in more depth than we may be able to do it today. But, but it's good to keep the issue of impervious coverage and structured coverage as an issue that we should be considering. As I looked at all the other cities that were put together on the attachment one, provided by staff, every one of them does not include pool as a structured coverage. So that's Saratoga, Los Cerritos, Los Altos Hills, Hillsboro, I mean, those are comparable smaller cities. So none of them think of a pool as a, as a covered structure. They all treated under the impervious category. And Montesereno has really a good impervious coverage limitation, we limit it to 60% for, for, for different sizes, but for the 8,000 square foot size, which was the one that we, we ran into, it is 60%. So I think the watershed will be fully protected. And Montesereno is a city that is full of swimming pools. I think maybe, I don't know if the staff has any idea, but when we were walking to get these ADU incentives explained to the residents, I think every house I went to, and I went to about 50 houses, seemed to have had a swimming pool. So it's a very high number, so we already have a lot of swimming pools. And I, you know, it's, it's, what, what, I think our goal right now is to clean the definition up. If a structured coverage is a swimming pool, which is what, how we're interpreting it today, that definition, I think, needs, needs to be cleaned up and defined, that the structured coverage, the pool comes under impervious coverage and not as a structure, which is what every city, at least in this neighborhood, is doing. So, you know, whether what other cities do is really doesn't, shouldn't concern us, but it, it does concern us when we look at how you interpret a particular language. I mean, courts will always look at what other courts do in interpreting language, even though they may be in different jurisdictions. There's a concept of starry sizes or estericata, but, you know, those don't necessarily apply here. So, so my, my thought is, let's clean up that definition, and maybe we need to have a more robust definition, discussion with the, with the, the rest of the city residents and to see if they're really concerned about it. Because I, I mean, I, the ADU is not just, I mean, ADU is a structured coverage, it doesn't just reflect the previous surface. So it also affects the privacy of residents as you do a forfeit setback. And perhaps having these pools prevents an ADU to be built in some, some cases. It may not, maybe a good or a bad thing in some cases. So I think there's a pluses and minuses. So my, my thought is, we really need to clean up this definition and be at least consistent with everybody else's definition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Elahi. Did you, those were all comments, do you have any questions of staff?
Yeah, my, my question to staff was, did you find any jurisdiction that uses, that considers pools as a structured coverage?
We did not. We did not.
Thank you.
And, and the second question for staff is, if you do make it, make a pool, take it out of the structured coverage definition, do we need to increase the definition for impervious coverage to make sure that, you know, we follow the kind of things we need to consider that possibly Luthold mentioned? Should we be increasing that by another percentage or something? Is that something to think about?
Um, we could definitely look at the definition of impervious coverage also and just, you know, make sure if any changes, you know, are made to the structure definition, that the impervious coverage is still, you know, in line with it, that the two will make sense together. I do not believe that we would need to change the percentage of impervious coverage allowed as the impervious coverage in um, as the impervious coverage includes the structural coverage plus patios, decks, driveways, and other impervious surfaces. So the impervious already includes the structure coverage.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, council member Turner, you've got your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Uh, yes, I, I, I'm not gonna repeat what Mayor Eli just said. Uh, I concur with, with his analysis of what's going on. I think we need a better definition of a swimming pool. I also wanted to disclose to the council that I did visit um, Karen and Stan's uh, home last weekend, looked at the pool, and it, it, and to me, I, I don't see it as something that is uh, overbuilt, right? So uh, I don't have a problem with the, the way it looks, and it looks, it looks okay to me. It doesn't look very big. So I would also recommend that we don't change the definition of the percentage, but maybe the definition. So those are my comments.
Thank you, council member Turner. Do you have any questions of staff?
No.
No questions. Uh, council member Lawler, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yes, I do have a couple of questions. Uh, one, do we, do we understand what the intent was of the city in classifying pools as a structure? I mean, you can't live in them. They're not dwellings. So I'm just wondering if we have any insight on why that would be the case. And my second question is, have we had instances where production of ADUs has caused um, structural coverage exceeding the maximum allowed? Thank you.
Sure. For the first question about why um, the pool is considered in the definition of a structure, I did spend quite about a considerable amount of time trying to figure this out, and with our current records, I was not successful. Um, so I did, I was able to find, um, I think it was around nineteen sixty, the ordinance that adopted the first um, sort of comprehensive zoning code for the city. And in that definition of a structure, the pool was not included. Um, I have found um, permit applications back to, let's say, the mid to late nineteen eighties, where the pool is included in the structural calculations. So somewhere, I believe, between nineteen sixty and possibly the mid eighties, the change was made. Um, but I wasn't able to, to determine exactly when or, or what the reset was. Um, in regards to the ADUs, um, so the state law mandates that we allow an ADU of up to eight hundred square feet per lot. So um, if a property owner were to put an ADU of eight hundred square feet, up to eight hundred square feet, um, the ADU would not count towards structural or impervious coverage. If the ADU is over eight hundred square feet, then the total square footage of the building would count towards both structural and impervious coverage. And there are, um, you know, within the last year or so, there are several lots that have an ADU of eight hundred or less square feet because otherwise they would exceed the allowed structural coverage.
Okay, thank you for that. And a follow-up question would be, perhaps we should consider if we were to redefine pools as impervious coverage, would we consider reducing the overall structural or impervious coverage overall to make up for those kinds of events?
So, um, the change in the classification of a pool from structural to impervious coverage would change the allowed structural coverage, is it would allow, you know, that much more building area on a lot. Um, it would not change the allowed impervious coverage because that does include the structure as well as other impervious areas. Um, so I did just sort of tried to make an educated guess um, from aerial photos, and I would guess that about at least one-third of the lots in Monte Sereno do have a pool. So making that change would then increase the allowed building area of those lots, um, you know, by whatever size the pool may be. And then, of course, similarly for, for any new construction could be a little bit, the buildings could be a little bit larger than they are right now, unless the structural coverage were reduced.
Okay, I was gonna say that that would ties into what council member Luther was saying about concern over o- overall coverage, so that might be something we should discuss. Thank you.
Uh, I can see that council member Luther has his hand up again. Go ahead, council member Luther.
Thank you. Um, I, I just wanted to, to mention, um, as it sounds like we're going to be giving staff some direction, carrying this forward. Um, and, and just to um, reflect one more thing that I've heard, um, as we had this discussion and have heard from citizens, um, our s- definition of structure is pretty uh, wide-ranging uh, and covers things like trellises and uh, just about anything you wanna erect that's not a fence. Um, and any kind of, I mean, garden shed or greenhouse or, or even a trellis um, is covered by our, our structure, I believe, as it's defined, and maybe Ms. Perkins can speak to that. Um, and should we, as we look at this, uh, back off on that a little bit and uh, recognize that people are putting up trellises, which are then non-compliant structures according to our definitions? And we probably shouldn't be worrying about those. Um, I actually was looking at the town of Hillsborough language, where they talked about having a roof and a wall before it counted as a structure. Uh, sounded like a way to get things like trellises out of structure, not because of uh, necessarily coverage, but the fact that then it needed to be a permitted item under a lot more circumstances. So um, I was wondering if Ms. Perkins has, uh, having done this job for a while now and seen what is conforming and what's not conforming, um, would actually uh, like the task or uh, have helpful uh, input about what we should remove from structure as we're talking about potentially moving pools out of it. Um, so that's one, uh, that's my main question. And then I did wanna echo uh, what I heard Ms. Lawler saying, um, and, and add just kind of the personal note on that as I interpret that. I've got a twenty by forty-foot pool currently. That's about eight hundred square feet. If that's now just simply impervious coverage, does that mean that next time I remodel, I can add eight hundred square feet to my house structure? Um, that's eight hundred thousand dollars. That's a lot of mass to my neighbors. That's a bunch of stuff going on. So again, into the unintended consequences world, I think we just need to really pay attention to how this is working in the real world. I don't wanna slow it down. I wanna get the perfect definition and get it done with. Uh, but I think we do have some opportunities to make it better and to get citizen input and make sure that we're preserving the character of Monte Sereno the way people want us to. So those are uh, my questions, and back to Ms. Perkins about, um, should we be cleaning up our structure definition in a big way as we do this?
Um, thank you, and you are correct that our current definition does include um, any sort of sheds, um, patio covers. One thing we use um, as a policy is that we would include um, patio covers or trellises where the roof is at least is fifty percent or more solid. So if you had an open trellis structure, we would not count that towards your structural coverage. But if it is, you know, a solid roof, um, patio cover, um, or arbor, that would count towards the structural coverage. Um, I definitely think the definition could be clarified um, quite a bit. Um, you had mentioned um, the Hillsborough definition, which um, I agree is very clear about what is included and what isn't. Um, I also um, personally thought that the city of Saratoga was more abbreviated but also straightforward. So I definitely think the, the overall definition could, could use some fine tuning, so.
Okay. Uh, any more questions from council to staff? Uh, council member Turner, you raised your hand and then put it down.
Sorry, I'm there. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to make a comment here. If we're gonna change the definition, that it's gonna be something going forward and that we don't require citizens to go back and remove what they have today. So I will make sure that, that it's not part of what we're talking about here.
Okay, I, I think that what is on the agenda is where staff is asking for direction from council on this. So we don't necessarily have to make a decision on what it is, but it's to provide direction to staff on, on what we'd like to have them do. And I'll uh, just chime in with, with my comments before I open it up for public comment. I did not understand the the broad, how broad Monte Sereno's uh, definition was. I always dealt with what the, what the definition was, and it's like, that's what it is. It is what it is. And uh, but when I look at the maximum coverage uh, by the different municipalities, the different jurisdictions, the structure coverage, and I see in the report, it says structure coverage, not structural coverage, but it's, there's different numbers depending on what is included in the definition. So what I would like to see staff come back with is a more of a robust analysis of structure and some sort of analysis to put it into an apples-for-apples, apples-to-apples perspective. And I know that's probably gonna be a lot of work, and as I would scare into the future, I think that what would probably happen is staff would come back with a, with additional analysis, and then we would give them direction on what we would like to see in an ordinance, which is typically the way the city Monte Sereno council works. Um, that said, I don't really have any more questions. So I'd like to open it up, and I don't see any hands raised by council members, so I'd like to open it up uh, for the public to speak, and uh, um, I already see a hand raised by uh, Mr. Stanley Watt. Um, Michelle, can you allow him to speak, please?
Hello? Oh, you can hear me. Sorry about that. Um, first, I want to start by thanking everyone, um, both staff and city council for considering this issue, given that we are the offending party. And so I really want to express my appreciation that you guys would consider this, and staff for all the work they've done to even get this research. Um, I do think it would be really helpful if uh, Monte Sereno had definitions that were consistent with other towns. I mean, for whatever the previous builder had done, there was probably a source of confusion. I can now see why there could be a source of confusion because um, there was a little inconsistency. That isn't to say that they, they um, couldn't have resolved this confusion, but I could see how there was a confusion and that there would probably be some benefits to having consistency between Monte Sereno and, and neighboring towns. Also, neighboring towns, it would be nice to consider that um, citizens of Monte Sereno could have like access to their property in a similar way that other towns do. I know there's a lot of talk about the percentage limits, but if pools do move to structural co- to impervious coverage, um, I mean, Los Gatos has the same percentage of impervious coverage as Monte Sereno does, while including pools as impervious coverage. I forget which town. There was a town that had no limit. Another town was like quite close in terms of the impervious coverage. So I think there would be some benefits for um, citizens at Monte Sereno to enjoy the same um, uh, same benefits of their property as other cities. I also want to just give a little bit of a statement. I know council member Luther has, had talked about our property in specifics. Um, we've invited uh, city council to come and see our property if you'd like. Uh, council member Turner, we're really appreciative that you came. Um, council member Elahy, you might be coming as well. We definitely welcome all the other council members. Um, for whatever, for whatever, to whatever set to, however, for whatever it's worth, um, our pool is actually not very big. I think um, the city planning official Diana Perkins suggested that most pools were about five hundred square feet. Ours is about half that, about two hundred and sixty-nine square feet. Um, if you'd like to take a look at, by all means, take a look. I also hear um, council member Luther's concerns about the watershed and um, converting large pools into large structures because of uh, this change in definition. I think maybe something that could be considered is that, from my understanding, there's more and more popularity in having smaller and smaller pools, and potentially maybe a way to thread this needle is that if you have a really, really large pool, that's extremely large, we could consider whether um, limits, different limits applied between really large pools and really small pools. I understand uh, council member Luther's concern. I think it's legitimate, but I also wonder whether there are nuanced ways to be able to deal with all these concerns. And um, the last thing is, I mean, I don't know. I haven't visited all these properties, but I, I certainly hope that we're not going to make a change just for the sake of our offending property. Um, little bits of surveys that I did, I, I don't know for sure, but I wouldn't be surprised if um, other citizens and other residents were in in similar positions as ours and could actually enjoy some of these benefits as well. Really appreciate you guys considering this, and I'm almost out of time. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, I believe we've got uh, another member of the public that wa- wishes to speak. Uh, Ms. Karen Gao. Uh, Michelle, can you manage that and allow her to speak, please?
She, she's got permission to speak. Oh, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Thank you so much. First of all, I just wanted to say that I sense that the staff and the council are trying really hard to carefully consider all the factors and do truly the right thing. And I admire and really appreciate that effort, um, regardless of how this turns out. Um, thank you so much for all that you do. Um, it's um, tireless job, and uh, I saw a little bit when Rowena visited, uh, when council member Turner visited us, how much dedication your job takes, um, both on the council's part and the staff's part. Um, just wanted to make a, a few points really quickly. Um, in general, um, I think we all believe that it is good public policy to have consistent laws across jurisdictions, especially cities that are right next to each other. Um, and it seems really unfortunate if residents of Monte Sereno are subject to more restrictive laws than those in other cities such as, um, right number, right next to us, right? Los Gatos, Saratoga, Los Altos Hills and Hillsborough. Um, and it's really sad if we can't enjoy the same benefits as residents of other cities. Um, if Monte Sereno does want to have a law that is not consistent with other cities' laws, I'd encourage us to at least try to be able to articulate a compelling reason for that deviation. It seems like, um, we're not sure what the history or the, the reasoning behind the law devi- deviation might be. Um, so just, I would ask, I was encourage us to think like, is there something special about Monte Sereno that justifies us having a different law than all the cities around us? That's my first point. Um, second point, um, I, I don't know much about this at all. You are far more expert than me, but my understanding is with SB nine and ADUs, um, we're already moving towards denser housing in California, um, including in Monte Sereno. Um, and so I just hope that we can just consider relaxing structural coverage limits since that is generally the trend that um, the state and the government want us to be taking. Um, and then the third point, um, is, um, I don't know if it's a silly one, but it is a timely one. Um, with climate change and global warming, it seems that extremely high temperatures are becoming increasingly common. Um, so at a very just basic level, having a pool for people, especially kids, to cool off in is, is such a relief from the extreme heat. Um, and I think it is probably accurate to say that pools are often used by kids. Like, I know that um, our pool has been, in the short time that we've had it, um, our kids and their friends and our neighbors' kids have used it. And um, I would just encourage you to consider um, letting the kids of Monte Sereno, you know, in, have this just simple but wonderful joy of being able to cool off in an increasingly hot and scorching world that we have um, kind of brought them into. Um, because of decisions not their own, they, they are facing a lifetime of extreme heat. Um, and so I feel like this is something, a small thing that we can do for the next generation is to allow people to have pools and have some relief from that heat. Um, so I, oh, I know I'm at time. I just wanna say I really appreciate everything you've doing, regardless of how this turns out. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Now, what staff has asked for is some direction and actually I see that. Our attorney Wagner is popped onto my screen and I'm not sure if. You've popped on my screen because you want to say something or if it's a random occurrence and. Not, if you would like to say something, please go ahead at this point.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Proton, members of the council. I just, I, I think you said that public comment is closed. But also just wanted to reiterate, as the council correctly pointed out at the beginning of this discussion. You're not being asked to, nor are you agendized to take action on any specific project. So while the, the background and the, the examples were, were interesting, they're not actually in front of you this evening.
Thank you. I did not formally, formally close the public hearing and I will ask our city clerk to verify that no one else has their hand raised.
There are no other hands raised.
I will close the public hearing. And at this point in time, I'd like to bring it back to council and. We've all made some comments and I'm now, I see Mayor Elahid would like to make a comment. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I, I think this has been a really enlightening discussion today. I mean, we started off with one small pool and it's grown to be, I wouldn't say it's going to be an ocean, but. You know, sometimes they say you can put a whole bunch of ideas in one drop. And the size of the idea, I think Rumi said that would be like the entire sea. So, so, so we've grown from that and we've gone into a discussion about the definition of structured coverage ought to be. How it should be, you know, how it affects impervious coverage, how it affects ADU. And one of the things I found interesting is yeah, that the pools are good for kids, but. Given the hot density, I think they're good for another reason. I mean, we are now in a fire zone and the pools might be one source of water that's available in an emergency, so. So, I mean, a lot of people have pools, so I don't think we're here to defend or advocate on pools or not. But, but we've really grown this discussion up, so it'd be good to put, put together and I, I don't envy staff. Staff has not, not come back to, has to come back to us and say, what's a reasonable percentage? Size limit that we should put on structured coverage? I mean, other cities have different percentage limits and every city is different, how they define structure coverage. And they have to kind of recognize as to what, what has worked in Monte Sereno. And then they have to look at whether, given the, all the ADUs that are going to be put up, what, what should be the limit on impervious coverage? Although the ADUs will crash right into that and make it meaningless. So, so, so there's a lot of stuff that we're putting on staff, but that's, that's the direction I think we're going. And then open it up, you know, ask the citizen of Monte Sereno to join us and let us know, you know, how they feel about it. I, I, I think. My, my feeling is most people will say, yeah, clean up the definition of structured coverage. Pools don't belong in there, but, but yes, we do need to make sure. We have enough watershed and enough limitation, impervious coverage and. Look, look at all those things. So thank you all of you for, you're really, really. Amazing discussions and bringing together a lot of ideas, but I, I, those are my general thoughts on what direction we should go.
Thank you, Mayor Elhe. Council member Luthold, do you have your hand up? Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Yeah, first of all, I know we're not talking directly about Mr. Watt and Ms. Gao's property here. And, and are limiting on that, although it is the example that brought this to us. And I want to thank them for their comments and their patience while, while we work this through. At the same time, I, I am concerned about what has been done on that property. And the fact that it's not really being recognized that. The, the prior person before them, the builder, straight up cheated and lied to the city of Monte Sereno. And now that's created this issue, which we're all putting a lot of time and effort into doing everything right on. Appreciate your comments about that and your recognition of that. But telling us and trying to continue to beat this drum that there may have been confusion. There was no confusion. The pool was asked for, it was refused, it was built illegally. It was red tagged, you bought the property, I'm sorry. And, and we want to fix that, so. And, and I think it has brought up a very interesting issue here, but it came up in a way that should not. No finger should ever be pointed at city staff or at the city's. Prior rules that everyone else lived by and your builder, prior builder, nothing to do with you folks, chose not to live by. Monte Sereno, we're all on council and are here because we have been charged and we are passionate about. Preserving the rural character of Monte Sereno. And yes, you bought into Monte Sereno and we all bought into Monte Sereno. And a thousand of our neighbors bought into Monte Sereno because it is different from other cities. It was founded for different reasons, not all of them correct. But we are growing as a city while we preserve the character. And what's unique about Monte Sereno and gives it value is our rural character. So I think when we go out to the residents, and this is coming back to the staff direction. Mayor Elahid talked about this, we really need to talk to our residents and, and it's been hard with virtual meetings to get residents to provide real input. We really need to find out what the temperature of the majority of the residents in Monte Sereno is. Yes, density is what the state wants, but we hear very, very strongly from our residents that's for the most part not what most of them want. We have to recognize though that it's a changing world, it's a changing demographic, so I think we can struggle with this. But I want to come back to staff on this again, Ms. Perk, Ms. Perkins and the rest of our staff have been working with this. And I think you can see ways that we can improve these definitions. And then take this out to our residents and say, here's what we're talking about and, and I think it was. Mayor Proton Mekachuk said, we need some really clear analysis on what the repercussions of this are. How much bigger can houses be if we change the definition in the following way? How is that going to affect things where there is an ADU that's put on top of? Sixty percent impervious surface coverage already there on a lot. And how's that going to affect the character of the city? That effect on the neighbors and what, if anything, can we do to control this as we go forward, so. All great questions. I don't envy staff, but I do want to say we're here to support staff in any way possible. As we look at how to make the best possible definitions and analyze how that's going to affect everyone in the city. So thank you so much.
Other comments by council members? No hands are raised. I will provide some additional direction. And I'd like to say, I'd like to see the analysis of structural coverage. In a table that includes the definition so that. When I say in a table, you could say, what does, what does the structural coverage include? A, a house? A poolhouse, you know, whatever, but it would be nice to see it in a, in a table. And then also impervious coverage next to that, so that we could see that, oh. It, it's not included in structural coverage, but it is included in impervious coverage. And then if we also see what the percentages are for structural coverage and impervious coverage. Then that would help us understand what an apples to apples number would be. And I'm being kind of describing what, what it is, but I think that would be super helpful to, to. Two audiences. One is city council, but importantly to our residents and having them understand it. And I do believe that, that it's very difficult to make changes because of what. Council member Luthold, I believe, referred to as unintended consequences. If you do this, then something else may happen that you hadn't thought of and it may not go in the way that you wanted it to go. So I think we have to be careful with that and I'll make another comment. Because the point was raised, you know, how did Monte Sereno ever get there? Well, let's, let's look at Monte Sereno and I've lived here since what, eighty, ninety-seven. Monte Sereno does not have the resources that other jurisdictions do. And we've only got a small staff and I think there's almost as many council members as there are staff, save a few, but. We don't have unlimited resources to look at things and the history of, of Monte Sereno, sometimes things. There were a number of paper-based records and we've tried to clean that up, so. But going forward. Those would be what I would like staff to consider. And then the other thing that was raised previously was definition and definitions and consistency across jurisdictions. And I believe that is very important. I, for example, live on the border between Monte Sereno and Los Gatos. And in Los Gatos, for example, you're not allowed to use a, you can only use electric powered. Blowers, you know, to, for, for cleaning up yards. And in Monte Sereno, you're not allowed, you're allowed to use gats, you know, here we are, makes the same thing, same amount of noise. But, or sorry, they make different amounts of noise, but we're only separated by jurisdiction, so I think. Direction to staff looking towards consistency with in particular Los Gatos and Saratoga would be very helpful. And in that table that, that I was trying to describe, that would help us and our residents understand it. I would like to ask Ms. Perkins if she's got sufficient direction going ahead or if she needs more direction from council.
Um, no, I definitely, I, I think there's good direction and certainly know what information to gather and break back to.
Okay, so. It is now the first meeting in September and. We can talk about it as a future agenda item, but I think it would be good to have this come back. By, and I'm not sure what's on the agenda at the second meeting in October, the first meeting in November, but I'll let you. And the city manager figure that out, but, but I would like to see it come back. This year as we've got council members that are going to be leaving. But they've got some very important understanding of this city. So I'd like to make sure that we have their, their knowledge and input into that. Do you have sufficient information now, direction?
I do, thank you.
Okay, then I would like to move on to the next item on our agenda. And that is. Agenda item. Sorry, my apologies, so I scrolled to the bottom of my. Discuss and provide direction to staff regarding. A potential excelsor accessory dwelling unit amnesty program and changes to the ADU owner occupancy requirements. May we have a staff report on that and I think you're back, Ms. Perkins?
I'm still here, yes. So thank you. As part of the housing element update that is currently underway, the city council has determined that. Efforts are being focused to meet the mandatory requirements to plan for our additional one hundred and ninety-three housing units. All of the efforts currently are focused on meeting this through the creation of accessory dwelling units. And to, to that end, the city council has approved a robust ADU outreach and incentive program. Which includes a fifty percent discount on permit and plan check fees for projects that create a new ADU. And this fee reduction is available to the first two hundred and twenty-five property owners. That provide a written intention to create an ADU and where the building permit is issued by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine. During past public hearings where this ADU outreach and incentive programs were discussed. Feedback was received that the city should consider on both an amnesty program for ADUs. As well as permanently removing the owner occupancy requirements. As these two items may be considered constraints to some property owners who would otherwise like to create an ADU on their property. An amnesty program would allow existing ADUs that were created without the necessary building permits. Or other approvals to be legalized without the penalty of code enforcement action. When such an ADU would submit for a building permit application under the amnesty program. The current building and fire code standards would still be applicable. So therefore, depending on how, how the ADU was constructed, there may be upgrades or modifications needed. And this would be verified through the plan review and building inspection process. If the city council would like to create an amnesty program for ADUs. Staff recommends that such a program be applicable to unpermitted ADUs. That were created before the implementation of the program. Otherwise, it may encourage. Some residents to, to perhaps create an ADU without a permit, knowing that they can easily get a permit later. And we would also recommend that the program have a defined end date. So regarding the owner occupancy requirements for ADUs. Typically, the property owner is required to live in either the main house or the ADU. And this is intended to ensure that both units are not rented to separate parties. Which could affect the character of a single family neighborhood or street. The municipal code does currently have an exception, which is in accordance with state law. That removes these owner occupancy requirements for ADUs that are constructed between January first of twenty twenty. And January first of twenty twenty-five. So if the city council would like to remove the owner occupancy requirements altogether and. Including those units constructed after twenty twenty-five. Staff recommends that this would also include removal of. Owner occupancy requirements that were imposed on previously approved ADUs. Namely those created before the current. Relaxation of these limitations from January of twenty twenty. So this concludes the staff report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll jump in with a question right away. Let's say that I constructed an ADU and did not get a permit for it. And under the amnesty program, I apply for and. Or I applied for amnesty, but it's got to be permitted and, and made sure that it's, it meets the safety requirements. Would that newly permitted ADU under the amnesty program? Would that count towards our hundred and ninety-three units?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. That's what I needed to hear. And hopefully the other council members and the public heard that. Any questions from my other council members? If so, please raise your hand or. I see council member Lawler has a question. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, and thank you for that question because that was one I was going to ask. Diana, why is owner occupation considered a restraint?
The, the feedback that we had received is that there may be. Residents or property owners where their home in Monte Sereno might not be their. Sort of legal primary residence, it may already be a second home. And so then there was a concern that constructing an accessory dwelling unit. Again, outside of the current five-year grace period. But would. Not be allowed as they're not the primary resident of either unit. If, if the home is a second.
Okay, so right now, anything built between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-five does not require owner occupancy, so we're, we're looking at. Potentially forgiving or eliminating owner occupancy requirements prior to twenty twenty. potentially forgiving or eliminating owner occupancy requirements prior to twenty twenty and post twenty twenty-five?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Other council members, any questions of staff before we open it for public comment? Uh, Councilmember Turner, you have your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I I I would like to get a a clearer definition of what amnesty is, right? Uh, as we move forward, also, when we say we can rent out the ADU, um, does that does that include Airbnb's? Right? So I I think um, what what I'm concerned about is is two things. We're we're saying that we're going to approve an existing ADU that didn't have a permit. And yet I and yet, um, yes, it'll come up to to fire code and 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 uh, but whatever codes we have, but yet I want to make sure that as we start renting them out, that if there's something wrong, that the city does not have to bear the cost of damages cost to the renters as well as to the new owners. Thank you.
Ms. Perkins, did you understand the question?
Yes, um, so for the the first part regarding the um, rentals, um, the municipal code does prohibit any short-term rentals. So any rental of property that occurs in Monte Sereno, um, a main house or an ADU does need to be for a minimum of thirty days. Um, additionally, the amnesty program um, a- as they're generally put together, and of course, their council could direct any in changes that they might want. Um, but generally, they would allow the permitting of an unpermitted, in this case, ADU without further penalties. So currently, we would allow somebody to come in and apply for a building permit for an ADU that may have been constructed without a permit. However, there could be code enforcement citations and fines that would be um, imposed on that property, even though they're coming in to legalize now. So the amnesty program would um, get rid of those additional fines and penalties.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Turner? Question?
No, not really, because because I asked you about Airbnbs, and you said that the the rental has to be at least thirty days, so I can't have an Airbnb where I can say to the renters, I will only accept renters for thirty thirty days or more. Is that correct?
Correct. You can rent, there isn't a limitation onto what platforms you can advertise property for rent. But there is a limitation that prohibits um, short-term rentals, which are defined, I believe, in state law as less than thirty days.
So I can't open up a business. That's an Airbnb business where the renters will be there for thirty days or more, and that's legal, right?
You can rent your property for thirty days and then to somebody else for thirty days and somebody else for thirty days, and that is the current regulations for any property.
It has to be an Airbnb. It's a business. Right? I think this, this is what I'm trying to get at. We have to be very clear as to what we're gonna per- permit or not.
So our, um, currently, we weren't anticipating to make any changes to the current municipal code prohibition to the short-term rentals. Um, I might defer to the city attorney to confirm. I'm I'm not sure if we can prohibit rentals for anything less than thirty days, like can whether we can prohibit rentals for less than sixty days, for example.
Yeah, the yeah, the standard, uh, thank you, um, and I'm I'm happy to to jump in there as well. Yeah, the standard is is generally tied to your TOT ordinance, and so transient occupancy is defined as as either anything less than thirty days or thirty days or less. I'm not familiar with Monte Sereno's exact definition, but it's anything um, thirty days or more generally is not considered a short-term rental. And that's that's pretty standard throughout uh, all the jurisdictions that I've dealt with dealing with short-term rentals. With respect to your question about, you know, should ADUs be treated differently than other rentals, I believe is what you're asking. I think the city would have to have an extremely strong reason behind why rental of an ADU is different than rental of a single-family home. And if somebody can rent a single-family home for thirty days, you why wouldn't they be able to rent an ADU for thirty days?
Thank you for clarifying that, Attorney Wagner. Um, Councilmember Turner, does that answer your question, or do you have a follow-on question?
I I think that answers my question, but I may have some later on.
All right.
Might, but.
I see Councilmember Lawler, you've got your hand raised. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, actually, regarding the rental, uh, the rental question, my understanding that is that in our municipal code, you cannot lease your property for less than four months at a time. We do not have a short-term rental policy with respect to Airbnb. Uh, so right now, that's how it stands. No property can be leased for less than four months period of time. Um, so we might want to double-check that. My questions are, one, if we were to, you know, create the amnesty amnesty clause or extend it, would we be able to have a sunset provision? Question one. Question two, with respect to current rental properties in our city, how, what is the data on how many homes are actually rented out right now? Is that a big market? I'm assuming it's quite small. Thank you.
Sure. So to your first question for the amnesty program, um, we do recommend that such a program would have an end date or a sunset date. Um, again, to encourage people to come in um, and legalize anything that may have been unpermitted. Um, you know, within a certain amount of time to to kind of encourage on that legalization to happen. Um, and then I apologize, I just blanked out on your second question.
Is there data on how many homes are actually in the rental market in Monte Sereno?
Sorry about that. Yes, um, I can certainly look it up and get back to you with more specific information. Um, but it is fairly low.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I surmised. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions of staff before we open it for the for public comment? I have no questions myself at the moment, uh, so I will open it up for public comment. Uh, and if you are a member of the public and you'd like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand, and I see that uh, Mr. Lively has raised his hand. Michelle, could you please allow him to speak?
Permission, as he's he's got permission.
Good evening, council members, or good evening, council members. Um, both of these proposals, they're the revival of the amnesty provisions and the uh, consideration of removing the owner occupancy requirements are really incentives to encourage people to get off the fence and either legitimize their ADUs or construct new ones, and um, this is all about achieving a hundred and twenty-odd ADUs so that we don't have to impinge on the otherwise um, current zoning provisions in uh, the city of Monte Sereno. There are, I believe, a significant number of people who do not tax-wise or otherwise treat their homes in Monte Sereno as their primary residence. If you insist on primary residency, that will have dramatic income tax implications on a number of people, and they simply won't do it. And they, the purpose of having uh, an ADU amnesty is basically the same thing, is to promote lawful occupation of properties and encourage upgrading of properties, and both of these should have sunsets. The amnesty provisions previously came and went. I would suggest that they would be coterminous with the current uh, housing cycle that's being discussed right now. And I also think the same thing should be true for the owner occupancy provisions, because if you have two hundred people who are trying to get ADUs done, um, it's going to take years really with the limited staff that we have. We're just simply not going to process a hundred and twenty units in in twenty and even thirty months. And so you need to give these people the latitude and the time to go out, get designs done, process them through in an orderly manner, and achieve our housing element without building eight hundred square-foot homes um, and being pushed on us by SB nine. Currently, everybody's right that Government Code sixty-five A two-two-point-two uh, does not inhibit or cannot prohibit owner occupancy, but I would like to see that extended for another four years. It does not personally benefit me, but I think as a marketing effort to get our ADU components done, both of these are very wise choices and should be adopted by the council. Thank you.
Let me summarize what you're saying and also ask a question to staff. Uh, I believe, Mr. Lively, you support the staff report. And my question is for staff, please clarify the sunset date. And is that consistent with what Mr. Lively was uh, recommending?
Um, so in tonight's report, we did not um, recommend a sunset date or a length of time for the amnesty program. Um, however, the previous amnesty program was in effect for um, five and a half years.
Okay, so we we our choice is, do we want to put in a sunset date, yes or no? And if yes, then when is that date going to be? Is that correct?
Um, that's correct, and one um, suggestion I might offer is to have the sunset date um, not extend past um, the housing element cycle that we're currently planning for, which is through twenty thirty-one. Because we're trying to, you know, get these units legalized and accounted for within this current housing element cycle.
Thank you, um, and I'm hoping that uh, Mr. Lively uh, could come back and say and and answer the question, do you agree with that sunset date, yes or no?
I do. Actually, I think both programs should be coterminous with the current housing cycle to promote uh, ADU development, so to speak.
All right, thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? If so, please raise your virtual hand.
There are no other hands raised.
I will close the public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Uh, I see Councilmember Luthold, you'd like to say something, and then uh, Mayor Elahy, uh, go ahead, Councilmember Luthold.
Thank you, um, and I wanted to uh, say thank you to staff. I think this is a great idea, well-packaged. Um, and um, and then bringing up the discussion about the sunset provisions, um, I'm all for this. Um, I I I would like to see the ADU amnesty. Um, uh, I would also like to make sure that the owner occupancy uh, does go away with the reach back into the prior periods. I know we've had a couple of citizens raise that over the last few years, um, that it uh, it was only that short window of twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five covered by the law. So I think it's very important that we pick up the uh, place, uh, the ADUs prior, especially since many of those will be picked up by the amnesty program. And then, yes, taking it forward beyond twenty twenty-five, we're probably going to see state law take it forward anyway. But I think making it uh, coterminous with the housing cycle makes perfect sense. Then we'll know more by the end of that next cycle, so um, I think uh, those are all great. Um, I would, I am interested, um, Councilmember Lawler brought up the question of whether we have a four-month minimum rental or a thirty-day minimum rental. That's nothing to do with this, uh, but I think we should um, have staff report back to us on exactly what our uh, minimum rental periods are for main units, whether it's the same definition for things like ADUs, and whether that's something that we might want to consider on a future council meeting, whether we want to have allow short-term rentals, and not short-term, uh, but a shorter term of the uh, thirty days or more. Um, I have clients who are uh, in Pacific Grove and um, that generally, uh, most cities nowadays, including a lot of destination cities, are allowing rentals of thirty days or more. Um, and that's that's pretty normal. If we're not doing that, we need to talk about the reasons why we're not doing that and and whether it's something we should consider for the smaller units. But that's not for this agenda. Um, for this agenda, I'm all for the amnesty and the owner occupancy waivers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Luthold. Uh, the purpose of this part of the agenda is discuss and provide direction to staff, and that's uh, what we've got to do. Um, Mayor Elahy, go ahead, please.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think I have much more to add. I think uh, this is, it's going very well, and I commend staff and Steve for putting together an agenda today that has a lot of very, very important topics and covering them in the depth they have. I thank Mr. Lively also for his input on this. I think he's uh, somewhat mov- moving the needle on this, so thank you for that. Uh, yeah, I I I think we need to move forward. I mean, under the current law, if the ADU cannot have an owner occupancy requirement, then there's no reason to put it on people who have already built ADUs. And yes, we should permit the old ADUs and bring them into line, so I'm I'm in agreement with that. Let's let's do it and uh, um, have the time period extended as suggested. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Elahy. Uh, Councilmember Lawler, go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you. Um, first, I I'm I'm good with the amnesty. I think, you know, the sunset clause to twenty thirty-one makes sense. Um, I understand the motivation for uh, get ri- getting rid of the owner occupancy requirements. I do understand that. I understand we need to mo- we need to motivate and incentivize production of ADUs. However, I am concerned about the how that will change the nature of our uh, neighborhood by creating more of a rental situation. We're talking about homeowners that are not living here for tax purposes, and they are owning second homes here that are more or less vacant for most of the year. Um, I also want to alert everyone to the fact that there are many communities that are really grappling with the disastrous effects of Airbnb rentals. Sonoma County has now banned them. Placer County is probably next. Communities do not like the the turnover, even if they're a month. It's very unsettling, so I just want to put that in our minds, being mindful going forward, that we don't want to open a Pandora's box necessarily. Uh, so any of those are my comments, and I will yield back. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lawler. Do you have any specific direction to give to staff uh, on this that you would like to add, or are you good?
Well, I would like to see the sunset, I would like to see the amnesty program move forward. I would like to hold off on the owner occupancy until we have more data on how many rentals we actually have and what the impact of turning all of these homes into rentals with two different families on each parcel, what that's going to look like.
Okay, thank you, and I believe that uh, our attorney Wagner would like to say something. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem, members of the council, and I know you, this isn't specifically the issue before you tonight about short-term rentals, but I did find the applicable provision in the municipal code regarding ADUs uh, specifically, and it does provide that short-term rentals um, or excuse me, uh, ADUs cannot be rented for a period of less than thirty consecutive days, and that's in section ten point oh-six-point-one-four-oh.
Thank you for clarification on that. Uh, are there any other comments or direction to give to staff on this? If so, please let me know. Seems like we're okay. Uh, Ms. Perkins, do you require further direction?
Um, no, I appreciate the feedback, and we will gather the information. Um, nope. I appreciate the feedback and we will gather the information in this item back to the city council at a future meeting.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to item four, which, which is you again yet, Ms. Perkins. You've had a big agenda tonight. Item four, review and provide comments on the draft twenty twenty three to twenty twenty to twenty thirty one housing element. Go ahead, please, Ms. Perkins. And I believe we've got public comment that we received as well.
Thank you. Um, so the city is currently in the process of updating the housing element, which will cover the period of twenty twenty three through twenty thirty one. And the city council has reviewed, discussed, and provided direction on the various pieces of the housing element, including how to meet the regional housing needs allocation, which requires the city to plan for an additional one hundred ninety three housing units during this cycle. And the council has also previously reviewed the draft housing elements goals and programs, which describe how the city will address the identified housing needs. The draft housing element was published for public review and comment on August ninth. The required thirty day comment period will end on Thursday, September eighth. Public comments have currently been received in from the online draft, as well as written comments were emailed from Valley Water. They had requested that additional water efficiency requirements be considered. So we will definitely update the draft housing element to include that as one item that will be presented to the city council at your next meeting on September twentieth is recommendations from Valley Water on different reach codes for water efficiencies. So we are working on that already. And staff is also anticipating that we'll receive some comments from West Valley Community Services before the comment period closes on September eighth. But we have not received those yet. Comments from the city council and the public can be made at this meeting tonight for incorporation into the draft element before it is submitted to the state. However, public comments can continue to be made after the September eighth deadline. However, those comments may not be able to be incorporated into the official draft element that is submitted to the state currently planned for September nineteenth. But any other comments received will be considered and included in the housing element that will be officially adopted by the city council, which is currently scheduled for January of twenty twenty three. Um, so with the draft submittal, the submittal of the draft housing element, um, as I mentioned, we are shooting for September nineteenth to submit that to the state. The state will have up to ninety days to review the draft document and provide any feedback. At that time, staff and our consultants will review the feedback, address it in the revised document, and schedule future public carings with the Site and Architectural Commission and the city council again for official adoption in January of twenty twenty three. So that concludes the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do we have any questions or comments from city council? If so, please let me know or raise your hand. Seeing none and hearing none?
Oh, Councilmember Luthold has his hand up.
Oh, I apologize. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Councilmember Luthold.
Sorry, I had my video off. I was moving around. The main question I have is at the intersection of what we've drafted and the public comment and the ADU outreach program we're doing, and then how that all fits into submitting the draft to the state and getting the state's feedback and then finalizing this. I guess I'm wondering to just make sure that we're completely clear about two things. One, the timeline for when the, this draft report is getting turned into the state. And then is our draft report able to say to the state? And will it, assuming we get our work done walking around, are we going to be able to say to the state, we have commitment letters from two hundred and twenty five people who have agreed to build ADUs? And therefore, we've covered not only low income, mid income, but fulfilled the housing requirements and lots more low and mid income than was required by the state. So please approve our plan. Or are we saying, and what I'm hoping we're not going to have to say to the state is, we have a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty commitments. Please consider this close enough. By the time this comes back, we'll have enough commitments. So how does that all fit together in terms of the date we turn this in and, and when we would need to tell the state? I guess the draft would say, we have this program, we have these commitments. Because if we don't turn it in, I believe we're not going to get the credit for those. Is that right?
Correct. So sort of the timeline push to get the draft housing element submitted is that the state can take up to ninety days to review it. And if they were to take the full ninety days, that would put us at the middle of December, which is, you know, quite a push to get a housing element adopted by January, which is the state mandate. So that's sort of the push to get the draft adopted within the next couple of weeks. What the draft housing element includes is information and a description of our ADU outreach program and incentives that the council has approved so far. For example, the final housing element may include what we had just discussed with the amnesty program and perhaps changes to owner occupancy requirements as further incentives and reduction in potential constraints for creations of ADUs. But the draft doesn't, at this point, doesn't talk about that. We don't, the draft does not specify how many ADU intentions we've received so far, but rather, we're working on this program and expect to have the completed inventory of sites to meet our one hundred and ninety three unit requirement with the adopted element.
So, so really, the, we don't need to report that to the state. If we did have that and had met the number, would we want to report it to the state at that earliest possible late September date?
I think so. If we had already achieved the two hundred and twenty five intentions, right now, as of, right now, we're at one hundred forty four.
Okay. And, and sorry, but I believe there was also mention that there are an additional number of housing sites in addition to the ADU numbers that we're pushing out that we have either, not necessarily through changes in zoning, but anticipated numbers that we can turn into the state. Is that right? And how many is that?
Correct. I believe, um, at this point, and I do apologize, our housing element consultant wasn't able to attend tonight because of a power outage at their location. But I believe that we have received five sites that have expressed interest in creating additional units through the SB nine programs, and those those interests were expressed through the housing element website that is managed by our consultant. So we will have those five sites to include, as well as any vacant sites throughout the city. And I think that there's just a handful of those. So those additional sites, when those in the inventory will just be a few extra to hopefully go a little over, over the minimum required.
Right, those are, those are kind of on the safety side. We should still aim for the full two twenty five and getting that done as soon as possible. But that'll be subject to, subject of another meeting, which will be coming up soon. So, all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Luthold. So I'd like to, before I get to Councilmember Turner, we had two hundred and twenty five as a target number of ADU commitments, non-binding commitments. And we've received a hundred and forty four. So that gives us, what, eighty one to go? Did my math correct? And that, and we've still got another couple of weeks before that is going to go out to the state, to the H U D. Okay. I just wanted to reiterate the number. So we're, we're almost there, or two thirds of the way there, better than. Councilmember Turner, you have some comments and questions for staff?
Yes, I do. I have, I have a tactical question for you, Diana. From what I understand, you know, when we talk about the state, we're thinking, oh, we have one rule for all cities. But that's not the case. What usually happens is it varies depending on who our, our state representative is from H C D. So my question for you is, do you know at this point who our representative is from H C D that will take our case? So we could do some, some research as to what they're sensitive to, how do we approach them? And, and you know, what things we can emphasize, de-emphasize?
Um, so we do not have a signed staff member yet. I do believe at the latest, if not sooner, but at the latest, we would have that information once the these comments on the draft housing element are returned.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any more comments from staff on this, or sorry, from, from council on this, questions for staff? No? Then I haven't opened it up for public comment. I should open it up for public comment. If any member of the public would like to say anything on the draft housing element, please raise your virtual hand.
There are no hands raised.
I will close public comment, bring it back to council. Do we have any more comments to provide to staff? No? Then I'll go back to Ms. Perkins and say, do you have the information that you require to move forward?
Yes, I do. Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you. With that, I believe we can close item four. And with that, we can move back onto our agenda and go to presentations. And I don't believe there's any presentations, but I'd like the city manager to confirm that, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I can check. We have no presentation scheduled this evening.
Thank you. With that, I'll open oral communications where any member of the public may speak on any item that has not been on, that is not on the agenda. If so, please raise your virtual hand.
There are no hands raised.
I will close oral communications and we'll move to written communications. Have we received any written communications?
No, we did not.
We did not. So then we will continue on to committee commission reports. And we'll just go in order of the council members, if you can speak on all the items that on the committees that you're on. And perhaps we should start with Mayor Alahi. Go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I don't believe any, I have any specific to report right now. I think you've done a lot of work reviewing the permanent fees. But I don't, I don't have anything specific to report at this time.
Okay, and can you just, okay? And on none of the other West Valley mayors, managers, the other Silicon Valley Energy, you have any comments?
Yeah, they were, they were all off last month. So it was, I think Silicon Valley Clean Energy had a meeting, but the rest of us, the rest of the meetings were off.
All right. Thank you. Let's go to Councilmember Lawler. Can you report on your committees, please? And words?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. I only have to report that the Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority is having its annual fundraiser this Saturday, September tenth, from six P M. to nine at the Triton Museum and Garden in Santa Clara. It's a great event, and hopefully there will be some residents showing up. That is pretty much all I have. The youth commission, I believe, will be meeting this month. Am I correct, Michelle? I think that's going to be our first meeting.
Yes, on Tuesday, the thirteenth.
Great. And Val water will have a meeting in October. However, I know Mayor Protem, you had attended their, their tour, I think. So maybe you could speak to that if you can. Thank you.
Um, I did not attend that.
Oh, you did not? Okay. All right. Well, they had, they, we can see it online. They, they had done another one of their tours, and they're very, they're valuable. They're, they're really interesting. But that is all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner, if you'd like to do two things, if you'd like to report on your words and commissions, and then also explain what you're doing in L A for everyone, please.
Oh, okay. Let me take the second question first. I'm doing the same thing that Mayor Alahi is doing here. So and the first question is, my committee reports, right?
Yes.
I do have on January, I mean, sorry. On the tenth of this month, if you guys are interested, there is a certain, there is a certain group training from nine thirty to twelve. And this will allow you to work with the Red Cross in term, in case of emergency. The new neighborhood watch group, the Twin Creeks, Bea Caballero, will will be invited to attend that training. So I encourage people from the council to, to, to do that as well. Uh, in, in terms of what we're doing here, we're attending the League of Cities. They have their annual meeting and to talk about various things, about ethics is one. And other things, housing, local, maintaining local control and various things like that. So this will go on until the ninth.
And I believe you're our voting member. Is that correct?
Yes, and, and Mayor Alahi is the alternate.
The alternate. And how many people are down there for that?
I think three hundred.
Wow.
I mean, this is the first time we've had a meeting face to face in a couple of years.
Uh, it's great that the meetings are getting back face to face now. Okay, perhaps Councilmember Luthold, have you got anything to report that you would like to report?
Thank you. Just nothing in terms of outside committees and commissions in terms of the reporting back on progress from the ad hoc on the ADU push. Things are coming along very well on that. And it's, seems like several of the neighborhoods are starting to hit their strides now. I've had great luck going door to door, getting a lot of good feedback and getting people signed up. I'm about to run out of my neighborhood, and then I will probably begin helping Steve White if he's open to that, moving up towards the top of Dave's and, and the top of Island. the top of Dave's and, and the top of Island. So looking forward to hopefully turning this around. I've found that when it's not a hundred and fifteen degrees outside, I was getting a lot better doors answering. We're, but I'm hoping this weekend will be a little bit cooler. People will be back from vacations. We'll get more people answering the doors, and we'll be able to really push forward. And hopefully, my fellow council members in site and architecture pairings can get out there and really close the, these last few hundred houses and bring in those last eighty-one signatures we need. So I know it's been a lot of hard work for everybody, but I'm getting a lot of good feedback from the citizens that they really appreciate what they're doing, what we're doing. When they take the time to talk to us, they understand why we're doing it and are very supportive. So I think we can report back that we're working on the amnesty program and, and all of these things. I think it's all good news, and we can work hand in glove with our residents and get this done. And hopefully, I'd really like to see if we can all find the time to make the push. If we can get this turned in with our housing element, I think it's going to be a lot stronger than if we are simply promising the state we're going to do it. If we can show them we've done it, I think it'll be very valuable. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Luthold. I'll give a report. V T A, the Policy Advisory Committee is meeting this Thursday. The agenda is out, and so I'll report back at our next meeting as to what transpired. The other thing that was last week, I had a meeting with West Valley Clean Water and then West Valley Solid Waste. And there's a number of things going on with clean water. I think it's, it's all good. And our director of public works is involved with our permit and the obligations that we have for that. And then with West Valley Solid Waste, it was a very difficult meeting because we have a agreement for hauling and then also for processing of waste. And the hauling contract is with West Valley Collection Recycling. And there's obligations that include liquidated damages. And without going into the detail, the board found that West Valley Solid Waste were, had to pay liquidated damages of some eighty-three thousand dollars. So that was a very difficult decision to make. But in terms of the environment, it had to be made, and they had an obligation that they had to meet. So we look forward to, the board looks forward to continued compliance with that. Then also, I believe on September the tenth, here on Villa Serena, there's going to be a meeting regarding Neighborhood Watch. So the inspiration from Twin Creeks is, is good. And that will be moving ahead here. It's a Neighborhood Watch meeting. And I believe that we're going to have a joint meeting between Site and Architecture and City Council, and perhaps the city clerk can, can give us a date for that, or if it's still up in the air. Can you please respond?
I, I believe we have it confirmed for September twentieth. Diana, is that, is that correct? About five thirty?
Yes, and yes, it is confirmed on five thirty, September twentieth, before the regular council meeting.
Okay. I believe that wraps everything up on committee commission reports. And then with respect to council member comments, before we get to the city manager's report, I would like to compliment city staff on their extremely hard work with respect to the ADU drive and, and also the assistance of our city clerk for helping me with the technical requirements for the West Valley Solid Waste Meeting, which I had council member Mayor Madami, Mary Madami from Los Catos, she attended in council chambers with me. So thank you very much to staff on that. And then probably my other comment is that the Doug McNeil unfortunately passed away from ALS. And his family came out with a memorial drive that's going to take place, I believe it's October the eighth at Coyote Point. And I think we'll have more information on that at a subsequent meeting. But quite a few people knew Doug McNeil and the contribution he made to our historic preservation and, and other things. So I wanted to raise that. Other council member comments, please go ahead. If any. Oh, Mayor Elahi, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank, thank you for the comments on the ADU. I think that's been phenomenal. And I guess we should not miss naming Ishan for all the hard work he's done. He's been helping us out with walking our precincts. It's got it really well organized. It's almost like a campaign manager. So he's done a good job. Thank you, Ishan. And I, I don't know if you've covered all the good work that was done on the picnic. Did I miss a meeting or have you had a post picnic meeting? But I mean, that was a tremendous work that Steve and his crew and his staff put together and had the picnic there. What was amazing is that every member of the city staff pitched in and showed up and, you know, brought their family together, and everybody had a good time. So thank you all, and thank you for organizing that.
Thank you for those comments, and I will say that I did see some of the pictures from the picnic, and those were fabulous pictures. The smiles and the happiness were prevalent throughout those photos. So I will as well compliment city staff on that. Any other comments by council members? No? Then we'll go to the city manager's report, Mr. Leonardi.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Mekacek. A lot of the points that I was going to mention have been covered this evening. So thank you for those who brought up the picnic as well as the special meeting. I just wanted to mention one thing for the public. We are in a heat wave. It's an extreme heat wave. It's been going on for several days. Today, I was feeling it, you know. A lot of people I know started getting headaches and stuff, even though you're home and you got the air conditioner on, it gets to be a little much. I was going to mention, if there are members of the public residents of Montessorino that find themselves in a position where they need to cool off, please utilize a cooling station. We have the Los Catos Library. We have the Saratoga Library. We're members of that. Can go there to cool and to log on and do things, as well as the city of Montessorino and our council chambers. If a resident finds themselves in a difficult position, they can come to us and sit in our council chambers and cool down. I just wanted to extend that. We have a couple more extreme days of hundred-degree heat, and I want the residents to know that we are available to assist any way we can through this time. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for your report, and then also for that offer to residents. Next item on the agenda is future agenda items, and do any council members have any items that they would like to see on a future agenda that we have not already discussed tonight? I'm not seeing any hands raised or any comments. So with that, I think we can adjourn, and it is nine o'clock on a very hot evening. Thanks, everyone. Thanks to everyone on the, the public that attended, and thank you, city staff.